General Business, I am A. Discussion by Council on direction. Congrats to Ironstone Street, Mr. Laporte.
How we doing, Mr. Laporte?
I'm set in deja vu. Last time we were here, February, Tuxedra was going to build license, right? We voted for the one-way, so it's a little bit of deja vu. The only thing was talking about the senior center, but it really freaked me out. I don't lie. I gave you a whole folder. We've been talking back and forth about doing one-way, dead ends, speed bumps, bums, wherever would work. But I'm happy to say, since the last snowstorm, two weeks ago, there's a picture of my street for you where there's a snowbank. I'm happy to say the last two weeks, we have not seen one wrong-way driver. So I take credit to having that snowbank there, because people can't slow down enough to take a turn. So in two weeks now, since that snowbank's been there, no wrong-way drivers. That's an accomplishment to have. And we talked about putting barrels, construction barrels over there. If snowbanks work, why can't reconstruction barrels work? It's not going to eliminate traffic. It's not going to affect plows. I'll move. I mean, I'm the only person on the street. I've called National Grid to take care of the lights, the trees, take care of the trash in the road. So I take responsibility above that street on my own. So I have no problem moving those to help out. Something like that, it was pretty... To see no wrong-way drivers in two weeks because of that, it works.
That proves that what we discussed at the last meeting, curving out the end of the road so it's not such a straight shot. And look at your first picture in your packet. It shows the intersection of 146 Buxton Street. If you follow Ironstone, oh, I'll just call it kind of northwest, because it's what it is in the picture, northwest up to 146A. That is the right way of travel, to come onto 146 from Ironstone. What's happening, and you can see it kind of in this aerial shot, if you veer to the right of the breakdown lane, it becomes a straight shot to go the wrong way on Ironstone going at 146A speeds on Ironstone. As you can see in this aerial photo, Mr. Laporte's house is very, very close to the road itself.
And as you see, it's a straight shot, so you need to don't slow down at all. And I said very lightly to a wrong-way driver during the snowstorm to slow down. I can't say exactly what I said to that person publicly, but they smiled at me and said, "Oh, well, move away." I do have a picture of their car doing that. But to show them, before those snowbanks, they were still going the wrong way, even though there was snowstorm. But since then, they can't slow down on that curb, and it's preventing them from going the wrong way. I think that's a great solution. Instead of blocking them off completely, causing different type of traffic, there's just two, three barrels right there. Simple solution. It's not asking for a lock on thing. Instead of, you know, they're going to go the wrong way, but it's going to slow them down. In two weeks, no wrong-way traffic. My other question was, I did a little diagram of my street. My street is actually 178 inches wide. It's about 14.8 feet wide. It's actually really, really small. So as you see in the diagram, Ironstone Street is a straight shot. So people coming up Buxton Street, if you drive down Buxton Street, you'll see there's actually skid marks in the woods, people coming on the curb so quickly. You can see it right now, actually. And if we put two barrels in the middle of the road, just to then slow them down, I'll take the barrels out of the way after the snowstorm. I have no problem with that at all. It's going to slow down traffic. It's about 77 inches wide. I did a little math voyage on that voyage for the barrels. Barrels about 25 inches wide. Divide that in half, you get 77 inches wide or the street width. An average SUV is about 74 inches wide, so it gives you about three inches still of plenty of wiggle room to move around that barrel, to slow down. So doing the math for the barrel and width of the street, you're looking at slowing down traffic, making sure people aren't going fast, but also not endangering anybody. As I said, kids are walking down the street, five, six o'clock in the morning, and, you know, wrong-way driver going the right way, icy path, you're going to nail a kid when he stays. It's a matter of time.
Now, Mr. Laporte, I don't know if I would support... I would support barrels for a temporary solution.
Yeah.
I would like to see this a permanent solution. And Mr. Pranigas, have you seen this? You've seen this, the picture with the snowbank?
I can do that.
To show that they don't...
I ride by it every day.
Okay, all right. Well, and you guys kind of...
And we're the ones who put the snowbank there.
Right. Well, thank you.
I think I gotta help you out in that.
Can you keep what's still there now?
See what I can do for you in July, though.
Unfortunately, it's dwindling quickly over there right now.
Right, it is. It is. To this point, we have Chief Gilson's approval, Chief Reynolds' approval. No one else has any problem with it. If you'd like to speak, Mr. Pranigas, to any issue that you have, possibly putting barrels or just breaking up the asphalt and let's grow some grass.
I'm not sure Police and Fire approval of what?
Of curving out this road to exactly the...
They really have no jurisdiction about that.
Excuse me?
They don't have jurisdiction about curving out a road.
No, they don't have jurisdiction over that, but they...
I do.
They're saying that they don't have issue where it's creating a safety hazard. Let's sort of just clarify my point.
I've never seen so much communication about one issue. This was all put to rest by the administrator in one short sentence, a one-way road. And that was the end of my discussion on this, as it was with the Police and Fire Chief. But it just seems to keep coming back, because we're not getting exactly what we want. I'm not going to put barrels. I've already gone that route, off of Route 7. That's a traffic hazard. So we're not going to go from one side of the town and move them over to this side of town. That's what happened over there. Unfortunately, what you have is a state road, very similar to many in this town, that they should come up on a straight shot. Unless you put a guardrail, barrels, or something there to curb that out, it's human nature to go over a grassed area. But let's get back to the enforcement issue, and that's what Chief Reynolds has already commented, that this is under constant surveillance. And it doesn't seem to be a big problem here. So I'll let him speak on that behalf. But I'm not putting barrels. No similar to Providence Pike and Woodstock Hill. Same situation. It's about enforcement. It's about people slowing down and doing the right thing. I'm not about to go and ask the council to make Woodstock Hill Road a one-way road, because it's the same, it's the same type of road.
Woodstock Hill and Ironstone?
Woodstock Hill, Providence Pike.
Right, but...
Same situation.
That's not a comparison of apples to apples, because Ironstone is nothing like Woodstock Hill Road. I understand what you're saying, where the issue may be enforcement-related.
It's a town secondary road.
Yes, a town secondary road, but it's not as long or as traveled as Woodstock Hill Road. Ironstone has one resident, where people are using it as a disaster. It's dangerous. The problem, and the reason why this keeps coming up, is that the one-way didn't solve the problem. It didn't fix the solution.
I think you better check that with the Chief of Police.
I have checked that with the Chief of Police, and he had no problem with this solution, where we're not blocking anything and we're asking...
My conversations with the Chief of Police is that there's minimal issues over there.
There's minimal issues that they are seeing. The resident on the road has a different perspective, Mr. Pranigas.
As every road does. You can come sit on my road, and see a cut through every day. And we're not going to compare this. All I'm saying is, I'm not going to put barrels to obstruct traffic. I can't do that. There are alternatives to that, if in fact the council wants to go in a different direction. And I think I just said that. You have to put something at the end of that road.
Yes.
Exactly. Not barrels.
Okay, right. And I absolutely agree with you.
I'm not convinced that you need anything there, but I'm not, I'm not the ultimate authority on this. I'll do as I'm directed to do. The direction that the administrator has already given is that this road be turned into a one-way road, and that enforcement take over from that point forward. I'm under the impression from the Chief of Police that the Police Department doesn't feel that this is a major issue.
The Police Department itself may not feel this is a major issue, but the last email from, the last email string that everyone was on within the town administrator, Hamilton, she asked you to do whatever you could for this. That's what I'm asking. If you want to, if we're able to put a guardrail there, let's put a guardrail there. If we can curb it with a cement curb, let's do that. I agree with you. Barrels are not a permanent solution of any kind.
Not at all.
Not at all, at all. I absolutely agree with you there. But if...
I'll be honest with you. I think this should go for further study on if you're going to get on this road with a Baldes or a Godrail. I just don't throw Godrails up on roads just because of one resident wants them.
I'm the only person on the street, though.
Oh, I'm aware of that. This is exactly the point. It was turned in from a two-way road to a one-way road.
I understand your point completely, that it is an enforcement issue. It is.
I know it is.
It absolutely is.
I know it is.
But if we can put in place something that helps that, then the issue finally dies. And right now, the proof of that is the snowbank. The snowbank, and what the snowbank has been doing, which...
It's a natural thing if people are coming off their road. Obviously, they're not paying attention to the two do not enter signs.
Right, I agree with you.
I.e., enforcement. I mean, we're going to go round and round about this. It comes to the end of the day to be an enforcement issue, as this does on many other streets in this town.
Right, now, I come from the schoolings. I teach, right, that's what I do for my regular job. And the way that we look at problems is, if someone continually makes the same mistake, probably the process. So let's change the process to fix it. That's what I'm asking for. That's what Mr. Laporte is asking for, that if we make some change to curve out the end of Ironstone so it becomes a right-hander, at least if they're going the wrong way, they're doing it slow. So anything...
Are they still going the wrong way?
When the snowbank came there? No. Well, once the snowbank was put in place, he hasn't had one person coming down the wrong way, and he hasn't had one person speeding down the wrong way. So that just proves the last, the last thing that we brought before works. It's going to work. So I don't know what kind of studies that you would want us to do.
Well, I don't know if I want the council to do a study, but...
Well, what you would want us to authorize.
I'd say, yeah. Last meeting, last meeting, we had a member of the Public Safety Commission here, and we started talking about whether or not they're going to have more frequent meetings. I think this is something that they should be addressing.
Absolutely.
We have a commission for it, have them address it, come back to us with findings, and make a, make a rule based on their findings. That's why they're appointed, and that's why they're there.
Absolutely.
I agree. I lived on a cut through in North Providence before I moved here, right between Smith Street and Middle Spring Avenue.
Oh, God.
I went and looked at the house on a Saturday. We fell in love with it. It's a quiet neighborhood. And then Monday through Friday came, and it would be nuts for three years I lived there. So I understand your, but I do, you know, whether it's Providence Pike and speeding, whether it's, you know, my street and speeding, whether it's wrong way down the one-way, some of it's enforcement, some of it's, you know, what can we do to improve the situation? Let's have the public, the, yeah, I just lost it.
Yeah, the Public Safety Commission.
Post-it review it.
In the last meeting, I asked Mr. Russo to take that up.
I was going to say, I thought we talked about it.
We did.
I know he had, there was a letter in there that had said that they don't do it unless they're asked to do it.
Correct.
So did we formally ask them to do it?
We did.
Okay.
Well, we did that before we did.
Right, I did.
Which was about...
And then I reached out to him twice and gave him Mr. Laporte's contact information. Mr. Laporte subsequently reached out to him, and all we heard was crickets.
Yeah, I would just throw in here, this Public Safety, I don't know their expertise in roadway construction.
I don't think there is.
I don't think they have any at all, as an attorney. You got to get the Police Department involved in this.
Yes.
We're all sidestepping the major issue here. It's an enforcement issue. It's no different than my road. I should be standing up there asking for a one-way road unfollowed, but I'm not.
Than Hampton Road, and everywhere else I've come. It just goes on and on.
This issue in all over the town.
Yes. May I, Mr. President? Someone refresh my memory. At what point did this become, I know we voted, when did it become a one-way?
Can I?
Yeah, just tell us, that's okay.
So the one-way payments have been tuitioned around February of last year.
One year.
About a year ago, we talked about doing one-way, and it was just people coming flying across, and I was getting in the middle of the road telling people to slow down, but just, you know, telling them to go.
Yeah.
And the reason why I keep pushing for this is, the difference between all the competitors is, I'm the only guy on the street. It's a, you know, I went to the state, I asked actually the Public Safety Commission, the state asked them if they could help out, and they gave me ideas about public funding, federal funding. Unfortunately, there's no federal funding for this level of streets. It's only for highways and stuff like that. So I mean, I did do some research on that. You know, that's the reason why I keep coming around. I've talked to Chief, uh, Chief Reynolds many times about this, and one of his staff, when I was on duty on the hearing board, said, you know, this should be a dead end. But I know a dead end's not going to happen because of the concerns of emergency services. Obviously, we had an emergency at my house. And so that's why, you know, trying to work together on something, you know. My whole life, I had 10 years as a social worker. I was always taught, work together, do something good for the community. And working and doing something good for the community, and it sounds like we're all afraid right now, that if we do something good now, we're worried about what's something else going to do. But it's a start. It's a start in working together. Egos go aside, all that kind of stuff, but working together. I'm not doing this for me, I'm doing it for the whole entire neighborhood. Because it's not just my house that's on the street. People come down the street all the time. You know, I'm doing it for the community, not just my thing. And it'd be great to work together, do something together, work as, start here, it's like Star and Ironstone, work on that. If I can head something, I'll be one hand to it, you know. I just want to do something good.
And your neighbors on Buxton?
Your neighbors on Buxton, is that the cut through to get to Buxton?
Yeah, unfortunately, I know who one of them is.
Yeah.
And the problem is, the reason why I get mad is, 40 feet, 40 feet, they go the right way to Buxton, they don't go the wrong way to get on Buxton, but to go the other way, they go flying down. It's 40 feet. 40 feet, they think it's a miracle cut through. They run the engine, you know, the house vibrates a lot of times, and they're just like, really? It's not a miracle cut through. And you see people turn around, go the other way towards Commonwealth Farms, and say, "Do you realize what you just did?" And I start laughing, staring at them. Now, I just put my hands up, and they answer, "There goes another one." You can hear it, and when you're watching TV, you can hear it now. Depending on the engine, you can tell which way they're going. But, you know...
Ray, can I ask you a question? It's been a year. Old habits die hard. So folks who were cutting through to go through your neighborhood...
Yeah.
I can tell you, Hampton Road right now, it's an old farm road. The worst offenders, but I'm bearing right, are my neighbors. They're in the wrong side of the lane. It takes an educational... So it's been a year. I am sure that some citations to traffic has been issued over there. You might have people coming from Massachusetts to go to a certain purveyor of coffee over there, they're using it as a cut through, and I get it. I think we're at the point now, I would like to say, you know, wouldn't it be cool if it was the snowbank? But I'm kind of thinking that people are getting educated, do not enter. And once a couple of tickets are issued, those folks do not enter. And honestly, I think we, look, I had kids. I used to get out and throw soccer balls in front of cars. I, you know, I could have caused an accident. I understand truly how you're feeling, but I'm wondering if this has not become an education to the educational component, especially as well as the punitive measures of issuing traffic violations.
The biggest, the biggest problem we're getting from you was, we're the only house on the street.
Yeah.
So if we're keeping on license plates, they're going to know where it's coming from. They're going to know where it's coming from. And people coming out of state, I don't know where they're going to do. But now, I'm just like, you know what, I'm just going to take it, my own hands and stuff.
Please don't. Let the police enforce this law more, because, you know, you'll be, you know, human nature, there are some bad people out there, you know.
That's why, that's why I never sent, that's why I never sent license plates over, because I was worried.
Yeah, let the police take care of this. Chief Reynolds is on it. You know, let's see what happens in the spring. Well, you know, that snowbank, wouldn't that be the peninsula? But that's going to melt, frosty, the snowman is going to go south. I honestly think it might be an educational thing, where people are getting, you know, we can't cut through here. It takes time, because people have been doing this, your neighbors have been doing this long before you moved into that neighborhood.
There have been some people, I was out on the middle of the road, a gentleman got out of the car. He's like, I was going on the driveway, and he stopped and yelling at me. I was like, what are you doing? It was a sign thing, because I believe it's since 1969, I never paid attention to any signs in this town. What excuse would I have when you get an accident, you're going the wrong way? Would you have, what excuse would I have? I don't pay attention to signs. You know, my big concern is, Public Safety Commission, I approached them after that email, they never go back. But we're here a year, a year later, still the same problem.
Have you seen any, any lessening of cars coming down your road? Do you still have the same flow?
It's, we narrowed it down to times. I have the times.
Right. Peak times to try to push trucks.
Keep, keep track of time. It's narrowing down a little bit, but the problem is, they are flying. If they hit somebody, you're going to pick them up the spatula. And people that say it's, they see it, they don't say it's all by hearsay. I live here, you know.
First-hand.
First-hand.
I know what you're going through.
You know, and that, and it's been a year now, it's still going strong. So we figured, okay, a year later, Navic Bank's going on, people coming off the highway going to Navic Bank. GPS is not going to say that, uh, wrong way. They're just going to keep on flying. My concern is, you were saying, let it keep going, what if something happens? You know, I'm always devil advocate, saying, what if? What if? I always have to go in my work saying, what if this happens? What's going to go wrong? And if the safety commission come out and say, hey, you know what, this will be fine? Great. It's more or less, I'm here to say, can we just make, do something? You know, and I, I'm here fighting for it, because I'm the only person on the street, nobody else to fight for it. And I've taken over roads of my own. You know, I've called National Grid, got the lights fixed. I pick up all the trash in the street. I've called it trash many times to come pick up my trash. Post office doesn't believe we even exist, and yell at them, because they say, my street doesn't exist. So everything on that street, I've taken firsthand responsibility for. So it's like my duty to make sure that the street's taken care of, you know. I just made my territory, it's a normal road.
One of the reasons they probably don't know is, it used to be the state road, because I have done a little research on this. But what I will do for you is find out who owns the piece of land at the end of the street, which I believe is the state.
Mr. Erickson did that, and it was, he couldn't find an owner.
And like I said, I'll research that.
Let Mr. Pranigas look for it.
Let me, let me do that. And then we'll go from there, because if it's estate property, I certainly can't put Baldes on it, or even consider putting a Godrail or something to slow them down.
Right.
So let's stop there. Public Safety, I mean, you want to have them do it, that's up to you, but you're not, whatever.
I want you, I want you to be back there.
Yeah, but I don't, I'm not going to get myself into the situation legally again that I got into, because I had one resident who demanded barrels and cones in front of his property on Woodstock, and that got us into jettison. So I will not do that. So I think there's an alternative, so we'll kind of come in the back door on it and see what we can do on that. Maybe I'll plant a couple of trees for you or something.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ray, you got a better idea? In place of snow, let's do it.
I could park one of my old trucks that's not working over there.
Yeah, no, I know you're, I know you're, Ray, I know you're, I get it, and you're trying to help us know that we're in obstruction, we're in the state right of way.
I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be controversial here, but I got to say, I rely on what the Chief of Police says.
Yes, okay.
I've had conversations with the Chief, and I'm getting two different stories here. So I'm going to call him tomorrow morning and touch base with him on this. We're under the impression that a correction was made, like I said earlier, that the administrator ordered this road to be a one-way.
Right.
In my eyes, it's been taken care of. So now, if there is indeed more of an issue, then we have to look at that.
Mr. Pranigas?
Someone else?
I requested all the email trails from town administrator, and going through all these, there's numerous times that she's saying that she's, the decision has been made, it's going to be a one-way, in conjunction with enforcement, that's all we can do. And it's been sent here numerous times, but then people just keep going after it even more. I guess, I guess I'm asking, what is the procedure if our Public Safety Director says enforcement and we've done a one-way, is it? Shouldn't that be the end of it?
We actually, we actually met, I'd say, September or August, we were talking about, this is when we talked about the dead end issue, and we were going to vote on it, but I believe the council listed it written wrong on the docket, that it wasn't mentioned about changing, Ironstone was talking about a one-way, and we couldn't vote on it. And then the financial, it was actually before it drew lives in June, and we couldn't talk about it anymore, because you had to go through the budget. And so we got, kept getting pushed back, pushed back, pushed back, pushed back, and all this stuff started transpiring more and more and more. So that's why it kept coming up more. I was still fighting it, because back in June, I'd be ready to go, we came to the photos in the docket, and then it kept pushing, 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 more things kept coming. And, you know, as you can see, after a while, it just takes so much, and you say, okay.
Right, and this was, this email is dated December 21st, saying that I've made a decision a while ago, the one-way was the last thing we can do in addition to patrols, just passing the info on that I've received.
And I understand that clearly, and that's why I was saying, but people still going the wrong way.
So I, it's, I mean, obviously, if you know the times, and we have to get the police there at those times, and get the people used to go in the extra 40 feet, or whatever it is, to get onto Buxton, and, because, I mean, and I can see where everyone's coming from, but we do it for you, and I understand you keep saying you're the one person on that road, but obviously, that was happening before also, before you even moved into that house.
And I talked to you.
So we can't just change that road, and then there's all these other issues in town with other residents saying, well, I'm going to, I want my road changed, I want a one-way, I want, you know, I want speed bumps, I want... I mean, we've already made it a one-way, and if you have those times, why, I think you should just email Chief Reynolds and let him know that these are the times of peak times that you're having the issues, and let him do his job there.
I agree with that.
Council, excuse me, do you have the email from January 11?
Yep, because you emailed her again, saying that you still wanted to pursue it because it was important to you. So it just keeps going. So she's made a decision, and it just doesn't die, it just keeps going, so...
But ultimately, the council has to find out, oh, what to do.
Okay.
And if it was a dead issue, I'm here now in front of you, I was given the ability to come in front of you, and you were able to put me in the docket, they proposed. So all I'm asking for is, you know, as you said, other people might come forward, but have other people fought like this for a year now, trying different things? Like, I've literally given you measurements of the street, going out there, finding out, like, I haven't taken measure, I'm going out, finding out how wide the street is, calling the state for federal funding, to see if I can get funding for this, for this to happen.
Right, that's right. Why don't we put some of this energy into letting Chief Reynolds know the exact times, and making sure he's there, and his patrol is there, and let's see what we can do. I mean, we got to, we got to go for a period of time. It can't just be a couple of days, or a week, it has to be a period of time, that people are going to see a regular presence of police there, and eventually, they're going to break the habit.
And I did talk to Paul L. about that, and I know that the Police Department is strapped, and I know this is a nuisance to them. I told Chief Reynolds, I said, I know this is a nuisance to you, and that's why I think if you do something like this with barrels, or do something to that, to eliminate that nuisance. You know, we have a lot of things to do in the town, rather than worry about people speeding. So I'm trying to get fixes, and not go burdening out the Police Department if something major happens, if something happens that they have to respond to, or rather than take care of that, than take care of the speed. I'm trying to, unfortunately, my mentality is help everybody at once, and try to take every cat out of, that doesn't always happen, they get us in trouble a lot.
So, Laporte, if you have any, I said, you said you were taking down license plates. Firstly, if there's, what, if there's recurrent people doing the same thing, I would turn those, I would mention it to the Chief and send it through. Sure. If you have the times that they come through there.
Sure.
And alike, and if, whether it be the neighbor says, you know, he comes through there no matter what, that he doesn't look at signs, well, you know, give him his place too.
Sure.
Because I, where I used to live on Brick Road, they made Locky Road a one-way. And one day, one day, one day I'm coming over the bridge, and I almost got hit by coming, somebody going out that one-way. So I know exactly what you're, how you feel about it, and the only thing I can say is that if we're proactive, and if you can narrow the timeframe where they say, well, look this... where they say, well, look, this has occurred from, I don't know, let's say 3:30 to 4:30 or something. Some timeframe, maybe they could, they could put an officer there. And if the guy comes down, maybe just pop him further down the road. So when he decides to come through the one-way, he'll be meeting a nice announcement to Cruzon.
Could you relay that to him? Just so that we're on the same page, knowing, letting him know that I'm going to relay the times to him. So as we said, we get different points of views, make sure we're all on the same page.
I'll follow.
Okay. Appreciate it.
So I mean, that's, that's where we have some sort of way that we can narrow, narrow the scope of things so that if they do decide, they can put an officer in the safe for an hour and a half or so.
Yeah.
If possible.
Yeah.
And those people, the ones that are still doing it, well, they'll think twice.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions, councilors?
The one thing that I would just like to say, and then this will be a dead issue for the afternoon, is the worry of setting a precedent where other people are gonna want their roads turned into a one-way. Well, if somebody has an issue with safety on their road, isn't it our duty to help protect them and keep them safe? I, I know what you're talking about with Route 7, I know what road that is. And that is still an issue. People drive over that guy's front lawn. And they're driving over as well, except that I, I don't agree with our, I know that we're not the richest town in the state, but we can at least try to keep our people, our residents, our taxpayers happy and safe. So setting a precedent for safety, I'm all for that. I'm 100% behind that. So we'll continue with the study.
Sure.
And when we get some results, and Mr. Peddias is gonna help you out, and when we get some results, then I'm gonna put you back on the agenda.
I'm willing to do whatever it takes, you know? As I said, working together, that's the greatest thing in the world. It makes everyone look great, makes the town look great that we're working together as a team. And, you know, that would be really good.
You agree?
Sure, I'll follow up on that. Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me need discussion by council, vote of action on PBIC. Indications for both, Mrs. Peddias?
Okay. This, we have quite a few things in our packet tonight that we are not going to go over. One thing I don't wanna go over in public session, but did want everyone to be in possession of it ahead of time, which was the list that we asked for from Studio Major, clarifying some things in the contract. And that's all I'll say about that. The roads are on track, tugging along nicely. The design, we're waiting on the end of development design, which should come this week for our next meeting. So we'll have all the information about exactly what the buildings will look like, other than, you know, what color curtains are going to be. But like this room, what the difference is will be here, what the front of this building will look like, where the bell's gonna be, that kind of thing. We're gonna know a lot more of that information and it will be time to start having Studio Major come in and show everyone here what it's gonna look like. We're that close. They're going before the Historic District Commission because even though some of the buildings at Bushy School will be, one of them is not part of Historic District, it's very important to me that we maintain the historic character of our historic buildings. And Bushy School is one of them. I asked Jeff Harrison, chairman of the Historic District Committee, if he would speak with Studio Major to make sure that the windows and any changes that we're making, because we are putting a bump out on to Bushy School for the elevator shaft, that it all flows and still looks like it belongs there. That nothing, you know, is to 2016 versus whenever that building was built. And the rearrangement of this room and what we're gonna do with the space behind us, what executive session will look like, all of that is just about ready. So within a month, I would say, we'll be presenting what all of that will look like to town council.
Sounds good. Mr. President, may I?
Sounds good. The council member, you mentioned the bell. Where is the bell?
The bell is in storage.
Do we know where it is in storage?
I didn't have it in an email somewhere of where it is. I could look it up.
For, for me, because I'm in people.
Resident, I'll forward it to you.
You'll run into everybody.
Yep, I will forward.
Where is the bell?
I'll forward it through the town clerk and you can disseminate the information. But I do know where the bell is. I have two different reasons of why the bell was moved from Andrew School, but the final resting place will be here.
Yeah.
Yep, will be in front of Kendall Dean because it is the school administration and the town administration building. So we'll have that bell here, which I'm pretty excited about. I mean, that's gonna be pretty cool. And for the schools, we are still in, we're still in conversations, I won't say negotiations yet, we're still in conversations with N S D E C. And there's nothing that I will speak to tonight. We do have some information in your packet, just so you guys are aware, but I will not speak of it in open session. We need to meet, PBIC needs to meet again before I can bring any recommendations to the council anyway.
Your name is Ross Zawinski.
We are bypassing that and tabling that to at least the next meeting, March 7. So that's a motion to table the award. Wait a second.
It's number 3A.
Three?
Number 3 on the B, B3.
B3A.
In old business, right? A, three, oh, go to the cuts. Right, so we're gonna table B3A till March 7th. That's a motion.
Chief, a second.
And coming back to B2, presentation of architect solicited, RFPs for survey. We do have a recommendation from PBIC and that is to award the bid to Nyberg for the survey of Bushy School and Kendall Dean in the amount of... You guys have it in your packet from the last meeting. It was, it was like, what?
Forty-two cents, yeah, sir?
Yeah, it was, it was, that on, it was $1,350. So I would like to make a motion to award the bid to Nyberg for the surveys of Kendall Dean and Bushy School not to exceed $4,350 on recommendation from the PBIC.
So you make that motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that. Motion by Councilman Peddias, second by Councilman Zawinski. Are there any further discussions in the way with bid to Nyberg? During that, Turk, roll call, please.
Is that, yes, Mrs. Peddias?
Yes.
So, just one, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes. Discussion of vote of action on memorandum of understanding for the town of North Smithfield. Do you have a first through, Mrs. Hamilton?
Thank you.
So she's not here, we'll table this in the next meeting?
Yes, sure. I will.
Okay.
I will note that I did review it. I had some issues. I spoke with Assistant Solicitor Roger Paul, he hasn't come back to me, so I have, I'm not satisfied that I have the understanding of this.
So I table this with the, is it March 7th, next meeting? Mr. President? Solicitor?
Yes, sir.
So do you anticipate a little verbiage change on this?
I, I think I do.
Okay.
I, that's why I don't, that's why I don't wanna, I don't wanna look.
So, yeah, rather than, you know, drag this out, why don't we just wait till we get the changes?
If you don't mind.
Oh, I don't, I don't mind. We'll rest the council, actually. Move to March 7th. So motion by the chair, move this discussion by council dealing with town of North Smithfield for a first through. To March 7th? To March 7th. Yeah, I'll second that. It's present. Motion by the chair, second by Councilman Zawinski. Any further discussion here in that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, the ayes have it. Move it to March 7th. Item D, discussion by vote of direction, resolution, E1 grinder pumps. It's mine. After confirming with the Russ Coppinger of Sewer Commission of the Sewer Department, prepare the resolution, and I'll read as follows. It's a resolution establishing policy regarding warranties, maintenance for E1 grinder pumps installed in Phase 1 and 1B prior to October 19, 2010.
Mr. President, if I may, before you read it, in my packet, I had two of them. And the verbiage was the same except the one we got to maintenance, and that's where the change.
This is, which one?
This was one of us handed out.
This is actually, this is actually a ver, version, Mr. President.
Okay, so I tagged and flagged and, okay, this is the one that gave it.
This is the one of us. Well, maybe, let me just speak to the, if I may.
Okay.
Because as you know, we, we met last night, we had Russ Coppinger on the phone.
Yes.
And as a result of that conversation last night and that conference of Mr. Coppinger, I today made the changes based upon Mr. Coppinger's recommendation. So the one that I handed to the clerk tonight, which is the most recent version, like two hours, three hours ago, is the version that I would want you to act in. Basically, the version supports the policy adopted by the Sewer Commission. If you read the, the wherefore clause, you'll see that we don't go beyond the policy of the Sewer Commission. I'm happy to explain the difference if you want me to, but I just want you to have the right document.
Okay, can you, can you explain that, explain it to Solicitor?
If you look at the version that I, that's handed out to you, the third version that I gave to the clerk, if you get the first page exactly as was originally given to you in the very first version, the second page, until you get to now therefore, was exactly the same as the first two versions. So that's all the same. It just describes the issue that's been raised before the Sewer Commission, researched by the Sewer Commission, addressed by the Sewer Commission, and presented to the council. And then we get to now therefore, I indicate to the council, this is where I changed the language. The first I indicate, if you notice, is here, the council supports the policy regarding the E1 grinder pump installed in Phase 1A and 1B prior to October 19, 2010, as stated by the Smithfield Sewer Commission. And then I state the policy below that. Can we go to it? I'm sorry, I couldn't make it.
Yeah, if you could just.
Oh, I see, should I say, I didn't say North Smithfield, North Smithfield. I said it right. I wrote it right. I didn't say it to you. I apologize.
So maybe you get confused with our assistant solicitor, where he comes from.
Yeah, that's probably how it happened, yeah.
But I think it made it clear that, I think we had a lot of discussion about this and then we recently had a telephone conference last night with Russ Coppinger. As you recall, there was some discussion about trying to have some sort of maintenance and what was the cost gonna be. And, you know, Mr. Coppinger made it pretty clear that if you were going to vote to have an annual maintenance, that's a, that's a 150 units, add 45 minutes to an hour, hour each, that would take up man-hours and man-time that would be virtually untampered. And, and it's clear in the, in the information that supports the unit that there is no maintenance required. And I think the Sewer Commission took the position that if issues come up, they'll deal with it on a case-by-case basis, and if need be, they'll bring it to the council. I, I think that was the result. Now, you still have the other two versions, and if you wanna go down that road, you have all three versions. But the last version is the version that has the input of Mr. Coppinger.
That's why you're, that's why.
If I may, Mr. President. So, so basically, the two previous versions that were in our packet, this third version we received tonight, the difference here is the maintenance statement. So basically, of the two that previously, there was a, we're going back to the original maintenance statement, which was on, you know, who's on first, who's on second. But we did have a maintenance provision that stated, I'm gonna read it. As stated in the environmental E1 grinder pump owner's manual, there is no maintenance required for an E1 grinder pump, period. However, the town will provide a maintenance inspection for E1 grinder pumps installed in Phase 1A, 1B prior to October 19, 2010. Solicitor, you already addressed that. So now, the maintenance piece is down to the one-liner, which, excuse me, one sentence that was on the previous one. Maintenance now reads, as stated in the environmental E1 grinder pump owner's manual, there is no maintenance required for an E1 grinder pump. So we've gone 180, or maybe we've gone 360, I understand.
Well, we've gone 360 because the two versions were presented to the council and then we didn't have the input from Mr. Russ Coppinger. And last night, I got it on the phone with the president, and Mr. Coppinger really pressed to move that mission. So, okay, my recommendations were important, the Sewer Commission and Mr. Coppinger, but obviously, I do with the council on.
Well, it's funny, I guess it was, to me, it was imperative we get, to get the input from Russ Coppinger.
Absolutely.
And so therefore, that's why the final, final version, which was handed out tonight, came forth. And basically, I move that, I move that we accept, accept this, move the resolution.
And you could, Mr. President, just refer to the council meeting resolution of February 16, 2016, received during the meeting. Okay, could you add that to the motion?
Okay, well, we had the resolution of the council meeting, date 216, 2016, which will be adopted tonight on 216, 2016 as well. And it goes, whereas resolution establishing policy regarding warranties and maintenance of E1 grinder pumps installed in Phase 1 and Phase 1B prior to October 19, 2010, whereas the top, whereas the 2009 town in North Smithfield installed a public sanitary sewer main that was accessible and available to property owners located in Phase 1A and 1B. Whereas the corners of the 2009 sewer use so units of the town of North Smithfield, sections 8-27 connections were reported in one year from the date of notice to do so unless the writ of extension of time was obtained from North Smithfield Sewer Commission. Whereas the North Smithfield Sewer Division issued a letter in July 2010 that notified property owners located within Phase 1A and 1B who connected to the town sanitary sewer system prior to October 19, 2010, that the town would install a grinder pump as part of the project course to reach home business and further state that each outdoor grinder pump comes with a two-year manufacturer warranty. The town will purchase a three-year extension to this warranty for a total of five years. After the five years, the town will provide additional five, additional years of standard maintenance. Whereas the town administration issued a letter dated July 6, 2010 that stated, according to the distributed environmental E1 pumps, requires no periodic lubrication or maintenance. However, owners, homeowners should follow all instructions for proper operation of their grinder pump. Peer service must be provided by authorized factory-trained professionals through E1 corp. Whereas the environmental E1 grinder pump owner's manual stated that environmental E1 pumps require no periodic lubrication or maintenance. However, should follow all instructions for proper operation of their grinder pump through peer service must be provided by authorized factory-trained professional. Whereas several property owners located in Phase 1, Phase B, Phase 1A and 1B who connected to the town sanitary system prior to October 19, 2010, have requested clarification of the town's policy regarding E1 grinder pump warranties and maintenance. Whereas the Sewer Commission issued a policy statement for residents and businesses owners located in Phase 1A and 1B that stated, at the North Smithfield Sewer Commission meeting held on Wednesday, May 20, 2015, a motion was not, was passed to not extend E1 grinder pump warranties for Phase 1A and 1B sewer connections past the original five-year warranty period. The first year, the first two years provided the manufacturer, and the last three years provided by the town of North Smithfield. The commission came to the decision after reviewing a cost analysis of service calls performed over a five-year period and a documentation provided by the manufacturer of the pumps regarding maintenance, that stated in the grinder pump owner's manual, there is no maintenance required. Phase 1A and 1B residents who own grinder pumps will be notified of the decision the month prior to the warranty expiring. Included in this notification will be a list of E1 frequently asked questions and answers, instructions for proper care, and a user-friendly list of items that should never be placed into the system. Following these helpful suggestions, should extend the life of the pump with limited service needs. Also included with the notification is the contact information for F.R. Mahoney, who Also included with the notification is the contact information for FR Mahoney, who is the E1 grinder pump service provider in this area. While owners may call another company for service as they wish, FR Mahoney is preferred provider because they have the start and initial warranty history for each grinder pump in North Smithfield. Now, therefore, may it be resolved that the town of North Smithfield Town Council supports the policy regarding warranties for the E1 grinder pumps installed in Phase 1A and 1B prior to October 19, 2010, as stated by the North Smithfield Sewer Commission. Warranty, the E1 grinder pump warranties for the Phase 1A and 1B sewer connections will not be extended past the original five-year warranty period. First two years provided by the manufacturer, and the last three is provided by the town, town of North Smithfield. Maintenance, as required in the environmental E1 pump grinder, I'm sorry. As stated in the environmental E1 grinder pump homeowner's manual, there is no maintenance required for, for the E1 grinder pump. That's the rest, end of the resolution. And I move passage. Motion by the chair, second by Councilwoman Nato. Any further discussions? Hearing that Madam Turk, call, call, please.
Is that, yes, Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mr. So, Mr. Zawinski, Mr. Bush.
Yes.